Second slate, and I apologize, I couldn't get the official timepiece out. So, calling the meeting to order, and thank you. See, is this March?
It is.
It is March, and this is the last meeting, regular meeting of March. All right. So, welcome, everyone, as I call the meeting to order. We will perform the normal ritual where we pledge allegiance, and then we have the community invocation. So, please stand with me as we honor our nation's symbol. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we recognize, Lord, that you are on your throne, and that you have providentially called each of these members to serve the city tonight, and you have equipped them, Father, for the very purpose that they are assembled. And we thank you for their equipping in their lives, and pray that your blessing would be upon them tonight. May your favor be upon them, give them much wisdom and discernment with regarding decisions and leading the city. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. Well, good evening, council. Thanks for coming. Are there any good faith amendments, excuse me, to the agenda? Hearing none. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest? We have a couple folks that are getting license or have applied for licenses, if you know them, related to them, married to them, that. All right, hearing none. Any declarations of council members discussing outside this meeting, something that would be voted on tonight, or something potentially in the near future that you should have known about? Hearing none. We will go on. This is spring, spring is sprung, which means it's proclamation season. So, we will begin with the Emmett, Idaho's proclamation for Week of the Young Child. Whereas the Idaho Association for the Education of Young Children, Idaho A E Y C, is celebrating the Week of the Young Child from April 5th to the 11th, 2025, and whereas we are working to promote and inspire high-quality early childhood experiences for our state's youngest citizens that can provide a foundation for learning and success for children in Emmett, Idaho, and whereas teachers and others who work with or on behalf of young children, birth through age eight, who make a difference in the lives of young children in Emmett, deserve thanks and recognition, and whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures and the prosperity of our society. Now, therefore, I, Gordon W. Petrie, Mayor of Emmett, Idaho, do hereby proclaim April 5 through 11, 2025, as the Week of the Young Child in Emmett. And I hereby recognize that when our community invests in early childhood education and educators, we also invest in our children and their families. Dated this 25th of March, 2025, even has the seal on it. National Walking Day proclamation. Whereas National Walking Day is officially recognized to be the first Wednesday of April, and all citizens are encouraged to prioritize walking for their health and well-being, and whereas walking is a fundamental form of exercise that benefits both physical and mental health, and whereas the health advantages of walking improve cardiovascular health, weight management, and stress reduction are well documented, and whereas walking is a beneficial form of exercise for people of all ages and abilities, meaning everyone is encouraged to incorporate walking into their daily routine, whether for short walks, during a lunch break, or longer walks in a local park. Whereas walking supports one of Emmett's strategic pillars, namely to be a health-conscious city, that emphasizes the importance of making walking accessible for people of all abilities, and where the city administration advocates for safe pedestrian infrastructure. Now, therefore, I, Gordon W. Petrie, proclaim April 2nd, 2025, as National Walking Day. And I encourage all citizens to prioritize walking in their daily routine and celebrate the positive impacts of this simple yet powerful movement activity. Given under my hand this 25th day of March, 2025, in the city of Emmett, Idaho. National Library Week, and I have an extra one for you. Whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. Whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. Whereas libraries provide free access to books and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. Whereas libraries partner with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. Whereas libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learners by providing access to resources and opportunities that support career, growth, and economic success. Whereas libraries nurture young minds through storytimes, STEAM programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and a love of learning that lasts a lifetime. Whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joining together to celebrate National Library Week under the theme "Drawn to the Library." Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Gordon W. Petrie, Mayor of the City of Emmett, Idaho, proclaim April 6 through 12, 2025, as National Library Week. This week, I encourage all residents to visit our Emmett Public Library, explore its resources, and celebrate how it draws us together as a community. Given under my hand this 25th day of March, 2025, in the city of Emmett, Idaho. And finally, and oh, by the way, I received a notification today that we were proclaimed, once again, congratulations, Mr. Freemeyer, a tree city for 2024. It's always a year behind. Way to go. Can you do something about the squirrels?
They're all at my house eating.
Oh, they're at your house now? Okay, well, that's wonderful. Thank you. That was nice. This is the 2025 Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday, Cold Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. You know, I've been through Nebraska a couple times, going to various military stations, and I don't recall seeing anything but corn.
It's all along the rivers.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and whereas trees, whether they are planted, wherever they are planted, is a source or are source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Gordon W. Petrie, Mayor of the City of Emmett, Idaho, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the city of Emmett. And I encourage all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to support our trees and woodlands, and I further urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and to promote the well-being of this and future generations. Further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. That's their form. They wanted that emphasized. Dated this 25th day of March in the year 2025, signed, yours truly. Now, are you going to have a special celebration somewhere?
Yes.
Mr. Freemeyer, where and when?
I will, a meeting with our tree committee tomorrow, and we're going to decide where we're going to do that.
Okay. But it'll be on the 25th, we just don't know the precise location or the time.
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Looking forward to it. Might even show up.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could you make sure that we're sent something that tells us where and when?
Yes. Yes. Now, going on to item eight, the consent agenda. The approval of the minutes, the accounts payable, and the two bartender permits, and the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
All right.
Second?
It's been seconded. Main motion has been made by Councilor Ruzinkin to accept the consent agenda as presented. President Henderson seconded the motion. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. No nays, all ayes. Motion passes unanimously. Jordan, you are on for approval ultimately of the 2023, 2023, 2024 fiscal year audit.
The party is here.
The party's here. Thank you, Mayor. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jordan Swigart from Swigart, John &amp; Associates. We did the audit for your year ended September 30th, 2024. I'll go over the audit briefly. I think I put a copy in front of all of you. If you have questions, stop me, I'm more than happy to answer questions, otherwise we'll just kind of hit some high points. I'll start on page four. This is our opinion on your financial statements. What it says is that we looked at your financial statements, we tied them down to supporting documents, to bank statements, to pay stubs, to invoices, and in our opinion, they're materially correct, meaning everything's being recorded in the system, the reports you're being given are reflecting those activities. From there, I'm going to jump forward to page 10. This is your balance sheet as of September 30th of your government funds. So, you see the general fund, you ended up with a year of about $4.6 million. Your road and street funds ended at about $1.5 million, and then all other government funds, you ended at about $1.1 million for the year. The library fund there also does have a CD of about $47,000 in it. Moving down the balance sheet, property taxes receivable, that $68,000 total, that's just back taxes still owed. And then a little bit of accounts receivable in the street fund. Due from other governments of $244,000, that's sales tax from the state that's received after the year and that's brought back. And then the prepaid items is mainly just insurance, that that insurance period is different than your fiscal year. On the liability side, you have accounts payable, which are just invoices paid after the year, and then wages payable, which is time worked. So, totally had about $108,000 there across all those funds. Any questions there? All right, I'll jump forward then to page 12. This is the income statement for those funds. So, the general fund, about third line from the bottom there, you'll see net change in fund balance. The general fund increased its reserve for the year by about $617,000. Road and streets increased its reserve by about $656,000. And then all other funds increased their reserve by just over $6,000 for the year. And then I'll jump to page 14. The next set of financial statements that we looked at, we'll look at it for your business type activities, water, sewer, sanitation, the perpetual fund and the internet fund. So, you can see water, you ended up with about $6.3 million of cash, sewers about $7.6 million, sanitation just over $200,000, then all others at $444,000 there. My accounts receivable totaled about $450,000. That's just September's utilities that were paid the next month there. Again, a little bit of taxes paid and prepaid items, like the others. That restricted cash line, water fund, you have $56,000 set aside, and that's just funds set aside per the bond agreement that are set in the LGIP. Jumping down to the liability side, a lot of these liabilities we'll look at later. So, again, you have the wages and accounts payable there, about $160,000 total across those funds. Turning the page to page 15, this is the income statement for those funds. Again, third line from the bottom, changing that position, a water fund, you had an increase of about $890,000, a sewer of about $880,000, sanitation about $24,000, and then the other funds totaled about $20,000 increase there. So, all of the funds increasing. And then turning to page 16, this is what actually happened to cash in those funds. So, water fund, cash increased by just over $1 million. Sewer fund, cash increased by about $1.4 million, sanitation by about $21,000, and then the other funds by $31,000 for the year. Any questions on those? After that is a footnote, we're going to skip over quite a few of them here. I'm going to jump forward to page 35. Footnote eight in the middle of the page says compensated absences. This is vacation time that your staff has earned, but at the end of the year hadn't taken yet. Stayed pretty consistent. You started the year with about $51,000 worth of vacation time, ended the year with $53,000. So, with raises, that's actually a little bit of reduction in hours, which is what we'd like to see. That means staff are taking the vacation time as they're earning it there. So, no concerns there, just something to be aware of that that's there. Turning to page 36. 36, this just shows the more long-term obligations that the city has. So, the general fund, you did enter into lease for the year for police vehicles, $203,000 is about the lease payment that there'll be, $32,000 down payment was made, so about $171,000 remains to be paid on those. And then you do have your two bonds, the two water bonds there. You started the year with about $9.2 million on those, paid $460,000 down, so you're at $8.8 million left on those. And then right below that in the page, you can see the future minimum payments on the governmental activities on the police vehicles, and then the bonds in the water fund there. From there, I'm going to jump forward to page 39. These next set of reports here that we'll look at just show what was budgeted in your government funds versus what actually happened. So, the general fund, you'd budgeted to bring in $3.2 million, you brought in $3.9 or about $671,000 more than was budgeted. In the general fund, you'd budgeted to spend $3.4, and you had expenses of $3.5, so you were over budgeted by about $97,000. Part of that is the way that in government funds you account for leases. The year you get a lease, the full amount of that lease is revenue and expense, because it's on a cash basis, so if you didn't do that, it wouldn't reflect there. So, that's what's driving you to go over budget, is that expense of the lease, which really wasn't a cash outlay that year. So, if you'd backed that out, then you were under budget there. But overall, you'd budgeted, the bottom line there, you'd budgeted to use about $140,000 of reserve and instead increased it by $617,000. Turning to page 40, this is the road and street fund. Again, on the revenue side there, you'd budgeted about $920,000, brought in just over $1.3 million, or about $427,000 more than you budgeted. On the expense side, you spent about $228,000 under what was budgeted. So, there, your budget was to break even, so instead of breaking even, you were able to increase the reserve by about $656,000. From there, I'll jump forward to page 44. Page 44, this just breaks down the general fund revenues into more detail, showing budget versus what actually happened, just because so many different revenues come there, breaks that up. And then similar, page 45 through 47, this breaks down, again, budget versus actual, each of the departments within the general fund. Again, you can see that really where that budget went over, it's on page 47 at the bottom, is that capital outlay that went over, $264,000. Again, that's where that lease is sitting, that's driving that. Page 48 and 49, these just show the other governmental funds, so the smaller governmental funds you have. You see the library, again, has that $47,000 CD and about $247 in cash, and then the American Rescue Plan Act ended the year with about $878,000 there. Turning to 49, this just shows the income statement for those. The library increased its reserve by about $43,000, and then the American Rescue Act had a loss of about $46,000. That fund, we expect to just have a loss every year as those funds are paid down, spent down. Page 50 and 51 are the same for your business type activities. So, you have perpetual care fund, the cemetery fund, and the internet utility fund. Each of them there ended just over $100,000 of cash. And then turning to page 51 shows the activity on those. Your perpetual care fund increased by about $10,000. Cemetery did run about a $6,000 loss for the year, and then the internet utility increased by about $16,000. Any questions on any of those? All right, jumping to page 53. So, in the state of Idaho, in addition to just looking at the financial statements, we also look at controls over financial reporting. Though really what we're looking at is more than one set of eyes looking at things, are bank statements being reconciled, are time cards being approved, we're also looking at compliance with financial reporting, are things being done on time. We didn't have anything that we would consider a material or significant deficiency. We did have one finding that we had, it's not in the report, but there's a little loose letter at the very back there on the second page. This was something that we saw that we felt was important enough to warrant your attention, but wasn't necessarily a significant deficiency. Just so that you're aware, currently, you have the same person that reconciles the bank statements, that's assigned around the bank statements, that's in charge of inputting things into the system. In a perfect world, those three jobs would be done by three different people. We don't have many cities that have that much staff to be able to do that. So, we just like to put that out there to emphasize the importance that someone other than that person reconciling really should be reviewing and signing off on those bank statements and reconciliations for all of your accounts every month. Really, that's a key control to make sure that there's more than one set of eyes looking at everything. So, we just want to make sure that you're aware that that's the situation it is and the importance of having those things reviewed and looked at monthly. Other than that, everything else we saw was in good. We saw where the invoices were being approved and reviewed, no other issues that we saw. So, a lot of information. Then any questions for me? If you do, my number's on top of the letterhead, feel free to reach out. I'm more than happy to answer questions, otherwise, we'll just want to make a motion to accept the audit report, or be good for another year.
Chair will entertain that motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 fiscal year audit.
Second?
I heard it down here. Which one? Oh, Dennis, okay. I thought you were pointing at each other. All right. Main motion was made by Councilor Nebiker to accept or to approve the 2023, 24 fiscal year audit. The second one, the second, was made by Mrs. Denham. And is there any debate? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. No nays, all ayes. Motion is approved.
Lylee, do you need these?
Whatever you don't want to take. Okay, just leave them on.
Mr. Freemeyer, this is to approve the agreement for professional services to Keller.
Correct. So, you'll have to bear with me, fighting a little bit of bronchitis, so, as you know, we've got Wardwell McKinley loop that I've been trying to get replaced and whatnot. So, this is to go into contract with Keller, our engineer, to start the design on the process of, you know, replacing water, sewer, we're going to redo the road, redo the curb and sidewalk on the inner side of the loop there. So, I am requesting a motion to approve the agreement for professional services to Keller Associates, Associates, Inc., McKinley, Wardwell Utility Replacement in the amount of $109,900 with the mayor to sign.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the agreement for professional services to Keller Associates, Incorporated, McKinley, and Wardwell Utility Replacement in the amount of $109,900 with the mayor to sign.
Seconded. Well, thank you. It's been seconded by Councilor Ruzinkin. Main motion was made by President Henderson to approve the agreement for professional services to Keller Associates, Inc., for the McKinley and Wardwell Utility Replacement in the amount of $109,900, mayor to sign. Is there any further debate or questions?
Mayor, I have a question. You're putting sidewalk on the inside of the loop.
Correct.
Is the street wide enough to sustain that?
Yes. Yes.
I thought it had to be over 50.
No, there's, I can't remember the exact width of the right away we had there, but we do have enough to go along the inside. And a lot of the, a lot of the right away, actually, there we had, we did have it staked, and it's quite a ways out, more than what you think.
All right. Any other questions? Then, President Henderson, yea or nay?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Counselor Denham?
Yea.
Counselor Harris?
Yea.
Counselor Nebiker?
Yea.
Counselor Ruzinkin?
Yea.
Yea. Six yae's, no nays.
Thank you, guys.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next matter is the approval of surplus and purchase of firearms with the Salt Lake Wholesale Sports Swap a Glock program.
It's very catchy, is it not? Swap a Glock.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question, I'm sorry. On one page, you're getting, I think it was $4.25 per gun? And the next page, it has $4.50. Or vice versa.
Hmm, I don't see a $4.50. I see on both sheets $4.29.
Mayor? If I think, what is it, the trade-in value?
The trade-in value.
One's at $2.50 and the other at $2.25.
Oh.
And also, Chief, I don't have that invoice. I don't see that in our packet. I know when it first came out, we had that invoice, but I don't see.
Right, the invoice was not accurate, and so that was taken out. Jake approved that the email would be enough with what we have here for this purpose.
Question, Mayor? All right, Chief. So, I also saw in there that if you don't have boxes or magazines with that, they'll reduce the prices. Is that already negotiated with the trade-ins that you have already?
Yes, it's already negotiated.
And do you know what, it will be the $2.25 or the $2.50 that you'll be doing trade-in?
No, I don't remember if it's $2.25 or $2.50. I see the $2.20, I see, okay, so on this, it says $2.50 each. Or they will buy our surplus guns back for $2.50. And then this one says $2.25. Well, this $2.25 is the one that's from Jim Roy directly, so I think that we should do the $2.25 is what we should. If we need to put that price in there, it should be the $2.25. The $2.50, that document is just what Lieutenant Hoff had written, so I'm going to say it's at $2.25.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to surplus the attached firearms to Salt Lake Wholesale Sports as a trade-in for the purchase of the firearms on the attached invoice.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Main motion has been made by President Henderson to surplus the attached firearms to Salt Lake Wholesale Sports as a trade-in for the purchase of the firearms. Wholesale Sports as a trade-in for the purchase of the firearms on the attached invoice. And you had those in your packets. And the second was made by Counselor Brzezinka. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All ayes, no nays. Motion passes. Next matter is to approve ordinance O-2025-01. An ordinance of the city of Emmett, Idaho, amending Title I, Chapter 4, Section 4, general penalty making an infraction a fixed sum of $100 unless a different fixed sum is specifically provided elsewhere in city code for a first infraction violation and providing an effective date. Didn't we do that once, or maybe I'm wrong?
We did do it once, yes.
Me?
Yes, but I just noticed something. So it says he just read 144. It's actually 141, right?
Oh, you're right. I got a Scrubner's error in up there, says Title I, Chapter 4, Section 4, and it's actually Section 1 there. So when you read this, presuming you want to approve the ordinance tonight, please substitute Section 1 in for Section 4, and I will fix it running into the office tomorrow. Thank you for catching my point.
Mayor?
And 4 on the very left. So this, actually, the Idaho Supreme Court attorney contacted us and wanted us and other cities and counties to update our general penalty because they were running into an issue with the court system putting in a code for the proper violation when it came to infractions. And so in talking with the county, our county prosecutor, we updated it to this language so that a first infraction, unless there is a specific sum provided elsewhere, is going to be a flat $100. And the Supreme Court attorney was good with that, our county prosecutor was good with that, and the understanding chief was good with that.
Yes, but it did take us talking numerous times with numerous emails, finally coming up to this conclusion.
Evidently, we're not the only city or county that had written previous there, but they would like to get things.
All right. Any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Using the magical language that is in front of you.
Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to approve ordinance O-2025-01, also move to dispense with the rules requiring the ordinance be read on three separate dates and once in full, and that ordinance be read once by title.
And when it's read once, that means Title I, Chapter 4, Section 1?
Yes, Title I, Chapter 4, Section 1.
All right.
Second.
The main motion has been made by Counselor Nebiker to approve ordinance O-2025-01, which would be an ordinance of the city of Emmett, Idaho, amending Title I, Chapter 4, Section 1, general penalty making an infraction a fixed sum of $100 unless a different fixed sum is specifically provided elsewhere in the city code for a first infraction violation and providing an effective date. The second was made by, and also to, to read the, once be read by title only, be read by title and only. So that being the motion and the second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. President Henderson?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Denham?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Harris?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Nebiker?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Brzezinka?
Yea.
Yea. Six yays, no nays. The motion is approved. Chief, are you going to do the honors of reading the title once?
Yes. An ordinance of the city of Emmett, Idaho, amending Title I, Chapter 4, Section 1, general penalty making an infraction a fixed sum of $100 unless a different fixed sum is specifically provided elsewhere in city code for a first infraction violation and providing an effective date.
Well, thank you. Chair will now entertain a motion for having the matter published.
We want the same first since it's just in summary. Is that right? Okay. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O-2025-01, direct the mayor to sign and direct it to be published by summary was made by Mrs. Denham, the second, Counselor Denham, I should say. And the second was made by Counselor Butler. Is there any further discussion?
Hearing none. President Henderson?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Counselor Denham?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Harris?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Nebiker?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Brzezinka?
Yea.
Six yays, no nays. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next matter?
And the next one, and the next one.
Is to approve payment.
Okay, that presentation that just received on audit, now we got to pay for it. So I'm looking for a motion to pay the $10,900 to Zweigert-John accountants.
Mayor?
Yes?
Make a motion that we pay $10,900 to Zweigert-John CPA P LLC.
Any amount of? Did you say that? Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
I said it backwards, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
My discretion.
And the second was made by Counselor Harris. So we have H squared. All right, the main motion has been made by President Henderson to approve payment to Zweigert-John CPA P LLC in the amount of $10,900, with the second made by Counselor Harris. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? No nays? All ayes? Motion passes unanimous. Here's another one we did, wasn't it, didn't we?
Yeah, you did.
This is deja vu all over again. But there's a reason. There's a reason for this, and it's not our, this is to approve ordinance O-2024-06.
So do you want me to explain?
I can explain.
Okay.
So as you know, to have an ordinance be effective once it's approved by the council, it has to be published in the newspaper. Well, as I understand it, when this was sent to the newspaper to be published, their system was awry and it never got published. And when Lylee was doing her checks and balances to get the certificate of service, she realized that it had not been done, and we are with, outside the 30-day period of which to do it. And so the easy way is just to redo it.
And there's no harm, no foul?
No harm, no foul.
All right.
No building permits have been pulled or anything. Brian's not here, so, yeah, we're good.
Check it all out, and it's not going to affect anything, so.
Chair will accept the magical motion.
Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to approve ordinance O-2024-06, allowing the ordinance be read three separate dates and once in full, and the ordinance be read once by title.
All right.
Second.
The main motion to approve ordinance O-2024-06, and by that, Counselor Nebiker, I presume you mean the ordinance annexing to the city of Emmett, Idaho, certain real property located in the unincorporated area of the city of Emmett, Idaho, establishing the zoning classifications of said real property, directing the copies of the ordinance be filed as provided by law, and providing an effective date?
That would be.
That one?
That's the one.
And that was also the second?
Yeah.
I get.
Oh, yes. Yes.
You got the, you got the third. Someone got the third. So, and that, and was seconded by Counselor Butler. Is there any further discussion or debate? Hearing none. President Henderson, how do you vote?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Denham?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Harris?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Nebiker?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Brzezinka?
Yea.
Six yays?
Yays.
Motion passes. Madam Clerk, would you do the honors, please?
Be happy to. Ordinance O-2024-06, an ordinance annexing to the city of Emmett, Idaho, certain real property located in the unincorporated area of Gem County, Idaho, in contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Emmett, Idaho, establishing the zoning classifications of said real property, directing that copies of this ordinance be filed as provided by law, and providing an effective date.
All right. Thank you. Chair will now entertain a motion for publication. Hopefully, it'll be published this time.
Mayor?
Yes?
I move to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O-2024-06, direct the mayor to sign and direct that to be published by summary.
Second.
Thank you. The main motion to, excuse me, to publish, to accept and publish the first and only reading of ordinance O-2024-06, directing the mayor to sign and directing to be published by summary, was made by Counselor Denham. And the second was made by President Henderson. Is there any further discussion or debate? Hearing none. President Henderson, how do you vote?
Yea.
Yea?
Yea.
Counselor Butler, is a yea?
Hey, I was talking.
No seven-second delay there.
Oh.
Counselor Denham?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Harris?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Nebiker?
Yea.
Yea. And Counselor Brzezinka?
Yea.
Yea. Six yays, no nays. Motion passes. Thank you. The next matter has to do with approving the account application for a new account with the Idaho, or the local government investment pool for impact fee revenues.
We're collecting impact fees now, and so in order to keep them under control, it was suggested that we open up an LGIP account, and then every month when those fees are collected, they're put over into the LGIP, and then when used, they're recorded and pulled out and used accordingly. So that is what this new account will be. I blocked out the ABA number and the account number so it didn't go in the council packet out to the public, so that's why that's blackened out, but if I could get an approval for that, then we'll get that started.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question. Lylee, is it normally just to have one signer on the account, or?
In the LGIP currently, yes.
That would be fair.
Yes.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes?
Make a, make a motion to approve account application for a new account with the local government investment pool.
Is that for the impact fee revenues?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, I missed that part.
I second it.
It's seconded by Counselor Denham. Main motion has been made to approve the account application for the new account with the local government investment pool for impact fee revenues was made by President Henderson. The second was made by Counselor Denham. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All ayes, no nays? I gave the night off to Brian Sullivan, who had dad duties tonight, and he wasn't on the agenda anymore, so what the heck. So Madam Clerk?
Okay, you have my department report if you have any questions. Okay. Also, you have the February financial report. There is an error at the bottom where it says specific revenues. Revenues to date under budget should be $1,458. Looks like the forward was left out on that one, so.
Say again?
So at the very, very bottom, it says property tax collections, budget, revenues to date.
Okay.
Then across, it says 1,58,544. It's missing a four. So it's $1,458. Okay.
This is a little short.
Yeah. And we're currently five months into our fiscal year, so we should run about 42% on our revenues and expenses. So you can see where that's sitting there. And again, we still have money in our upper funds, but those will get taken care of this year.
Thank you.
One other thing, that we've started our budget planning with our directors, so I wanted to put out there to mark your calendars for our meeting with you guys. The budget workshop meetings will be on June 24th, so the last council meeting of June, and then the first council meeting in July, July 8th. So these, those will be our two workshop days.
What time are we going to do those, like?
We, last year, we did them at the end of the council meeting. So do you want to continue that, or do you want to come in earlier and do it?
That's fine.
After the council meeting? Okay, okay. I mean, it'll still be in the meeting, you know, because it still has to be that way. And then the, we will adopt the tentative budget on July 22nd, and then the budget hearing for the public will be August 26th. Coming right up, you hear before we know it.
Do you have any questions? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And of course, you'll get reminded of all that, but just for now. All right, next.
Chief Christensen?
Thank you.
Mayor and council, you have a copy of my report. Couple of things just to discuss really quick. We have three, two new gas monitors we got on a grant, and so they are very high zoot. So if we have like a, an incident inside the city that requires outside resources to come and help us, they can actually see real-time data that we're getting on our monitors. So that's definitely a big upgrade right there. And then we are in the process of looking for an engine, probably new to us, something much newer than a 1993. So that I will be getting to you guys fairly soon. So just an idea of what we're doing. We have three firefighters, pastor driver operator, so, yeah, we have now three more people that can drive the big red engine. So, any questions?
Mayor? I gave Mike Urie a link with the fire truck.
Okay.
Then I was just wondering if they proceeded with checking if that motor would work?
The last time we discussed as far as a council, that we were not going to be putting any money into that. If you had other ideas, that you wanted to put a new motor in our expired engine, then we could talk about it as a council. But, yeah, were you thinking that we should rebuild the, the fire engine that we, you were looking at, that's something you'd like to?
No, what I, I sent him was the whole fire truck.
Right.
And it's around the same year. I didn't know if it was the same motor, if we could pull that motor. I didn't know.
Oh, no problem. No, it's a.
I asked him to have Tim check into it.
Oh, okay.
You know, I mean, it's no big deal.
Yeah. I think it was a Cummins motor. Yeah. I think it was a Cummins motor in that, and what we're looking for is an international, I can't remember the name of the engine right now, but it's, we've been looking and we found one, but it's, yeah, it's 50 grand, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Have we heard anything from California on settlement or anything?
The last thing I heard was, yeah, that's what they were, they were going to go with is the 42 or $43,000. But I have not heard back from them other than that, so.
So you were able to get the mechanic sheets or whatever quotes?
Yeah.
And provide it to them, and now they're just negotiating with you on that?
I don't think there's going to be much negotiation. I think they're, the last time I, when I was talking to him on the phone, he was a. time I, when I was talking to him on the phone, he was just going to write us a check. But that's the last I've heard from him.
And my thought, just personally, my thought would be to not rebuild that truck we have in existence. I would think a newer FRS would be a lot better for the department and serve the city better.
I, I agree, and there's a lot of difference between different types of engines. What we're really kind of looking towards is like a four-wheel-drive engine that could service, you know, that urban interface a little bit better than what we have right now, so.
Mayor.
Yes.
And wasn't it also said that you weren't really positive that a complete fix would be an engine, there could be other problems besides?
Guaranteed, yeah. Guaranteed.
That's what I was, I was thinking I'd heard, but I wasn't sure. Okay.
You're going from analog to digital and digital analog when you're dealing with something from 93, and it's a very specific motor that's in that, and just trying to figure out what's going on and why it actually did what it did, we still don't know why it did that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Ms. Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, you have my reports, my statistics. Any questions for me?
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. That pie was delicious.
Good, good. I, you know, that was actually kind of the first little impromptu-type fundraiser the teams have tried. They are a newly formed group, and I think they were very encouraged. I think my last report, I think they did like $153, so that'll go for, you know, they like to have, you know, membership meetings and, you know, membership drives, so that'll, that'll help with that, so. Very encouraged by them. They also have a book club that the library is sponsoring, so they're moving right along.
Thank you.
And I'll get my proclamations there. Sure. We are going to sponsor a story walk on the 2nd of April. It'll be at the library this year, so we'll have it outside around the library, and then we have a special free event planned for the kids that afternoon, so it'll be fun.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council and Mayor, I would like to bring a little closure on a topic that is on my report, and that is the one that pertains to the ordinance for bikes. I've done quite a bit of research here recently, along with talking to the city attorney, who then directed me to the prosecutor. The prosecutor and I have discussed another things. One of them being that current, well, what I should say is, the reason this came about is Mr. Ruzinkin, Councilman Ruzinkin, actually brought up his concerns of the electric bikes and scooters in town, and I think he's not the only one who has those concerns, but he did bring those up to me. We did and do have a city ordinance that says that you cannot have electric bikes, sorry, cannot have bikes or scooters in the commercial zone downtown business area. That's the first thing that I confirmed with Eric, is that by state law, an electric bike is considered a bike, and so it has to follow the same rules of the road with the city ordinance and also with the state law. So there doesn't need to be any clarification with the electric bike. The second thing, though, was the scooter, and he did confirm that the scooter is not covered by state law or covered by the city ordinance, because the city ordinance only talks about bikes or skateboards, and electric scooter's not considered either one of those. So then, as him and I are talking, we are trying to decide, is it, is it really what we want to do? Is it really that we want to add electric scooter onto that and then causing kids or adults on electric scooters, and we, as a city, saying you have to go into the roadway? So we kind of talked about that back and forth, and really didn't come up to a conclusion until Eric did locate what the Boise has for a city ordinance, and ironically enough, their penalty is 1 for 1, which is why I caught that today, because I had just seen the penalty for ours, which is also 1 for 1. Anyways, it actually is, is very good, and I just sent it to, to our city attorney, to Jake, about an hour ago, he probably had not seen it yet, and it has not been approved by him yet by any means, but it talks about reckless or inattentive operation of a bicycle, e-bike, or e-scooter on any public or private property. To me, that gives us more ability to be able, as law enforcement officers, to determine if it's a safe operation of that scooter, regardless on sidewalk or on street, and also leaving it up to the operator to determine if they feel it's safer on the street or on the sidewalk. Instead of us being the ones who are just automatically saying, hey, it's safer for you to be in the street, or safer for you to be on the sidewalk, they can make that decision. And again, this is something that just hit me just today, Eric and I were looking at it, and he just was suggesting this, I still think it, it needs some time for us to look at this and see if this is the best thing, but I'm kind of leaning towards that, as I'm leaning towards getting an ordinance that is for that, for the reckless or inattentive operation of those things.
The one thing that bikers, bike riders, riding on a sidewalk, always seem to not understand, and that is you yield to the pedestrians, they think they have the king of the sidewalk in their car.
And I think that during Cherry Festival and during times that there are a lot of pedestrians downtown, we see a biker weaving in and out of people, then I think that this ordinance would apply for that. If I see a biker and there's no pedestrians, and it's after 5:00, and a lot of the businesses are closed, I, I don't think that he would be, or she would be in violation of that. So I think it gives us, instead of just saying, period, you can't be there, and then you push the kids out in the street, and is it really safer to be out there or not? So I think it gives us that, I like that.
It might not be safer for them to be out in the street, but it's safer for people downtown that want to step out of a building and a kid's doing 20 miles an hour down the sidewalk.
Well, and that's what this ordinance, and thank you for bringing up, this ordinance specifically talks about speed, and it says, or without due caution and circumstance, circumspection, or at such speed, or in any other manner as to endanger or be likely to endanger someone. So yes, that would, if they were going at a high rate of speed, 20 miles an hour, and there's no pedestrians, but they're doing 20, that's possibly, it could endanger or be likely to endanger somebody. So that would fit there.
And also, one other thing, I realize this is a different state, but Florida has gone in depth on the e-bikes and that. There are certain different levels of the e-bike. One, you have to pedal before the electric motor kick in, and they're rating that at a different. There's other ones that you just twist the handle and it goes, you don't have to pedal. They're claiming that there's two different bikes there, because one's more dangerous, the other one, you have to actually pedal to make it go by electricity. I don't know if that's something else that needs to be checked in also.
Okay. And I can, I did not have a chance to look at the definition of these inside the Boise ordinance, it talks about bicycle, e-bike, e-scooter, I'll look into their definition and see if it specifies any of that.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Mr. Freymar.
The tree king of Emmet.
The tree king of Emmet. Did I take over that title when I took this title also, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor and Council, you guys have my reports. Any questions?
Yes.
He's always curious, because when we did the audit, I noticed that the cemetery was over budget. Do you have, do you, do you know why it was over budget, or do you have an idea why it was over budget?
I do not. It's just coming in, I don't fully understand the, our budget, but.
Find out why it's over budget?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thanks, man.
Yep.
Well, obviously, you had some expenses that were unaccounted for during the planning session.
Correct.
I was just curious what was the over budget?
I can help on that, too.
Any word on the pickleball court, how, is it coming?
So, we actually just finished up all the concrete that goes around it. Now, just kind of doing cleanup around that. I will make a phone call tomorrow to the contractors to do the fencing around the outside, and to find out when they are going to be able to come in and paint, because I know they have to wait for certain temperatures, so. Yep.
One more question. When that's all done, is there still, because I know we had a change of leadership in the road department and all that, is there still going to be a pickleball between you and the PD?
I don't know yet. We'll, we'll, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there, we got to get it finished first.
Baby, is that what he's doing?
The boys usually kick their, their behinds anyways, so.
What was the score in the volleyball, or did we?
Yeah, we would love to challenge them in pickleball, yes.
Change the subject. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Canell.
Mr. IT guy.
Counsel, a couple brief updates. I look to, next meeting, have the Impact Peace Committee to you for ratification, firming up the fifth and final member this week, but we should have a really good committee, so we'll look for that very soon. Also, on the access control, door locks, ADA upgrade stuff, we should have those preliminary numbers back this week. After going through and walking through and getting those numbers, it, it is going to be quite the daunting task, so what we're going to do is break it up into seven digestible chunks, so what we'll say, because we do believe it's going to go into a new budget year as well, so to, to keep the finances and that sort of thing very clear and manageable for us, we'll look to break that up into those chunks and come to you for allocation of the funds to do that. So instead of trying to tackle one massive thing, we're going to break it up, keep it very clean for two different budget years as well, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
There being no engineer, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment. Yes. Okay. It's been moved and seconded, moved by Counselor Butler, and seconded.